I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Or arms, out. Oh, or arms.
What is it, arms? My ears. I guess my, my ears. My ears, you see, by you. Beep 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 beep.
Albert Cooper, here, Ernest, Paul, Jim, Johnson.
Here.
Rock.
Here.
Katrina.
Here.
Petrofasson.
President.
Santos.
Here.
Malara.
All right, welcome everyone. For some recognitions, we're gonna have an update on the Moore Street School National Blue Ribbon Award Ceremony in Washington DC. All right, come on up guys.
Come on up. There's another chair, Bill.
Hi, my name is Rhoda Dider. I'm a 4th grade teacher at Moore Street School. And this is Dennis Stromeyer, who's a 5th grade teacher at Moore Street School. And we were two of the lucky ones to get to go to Washington. So first, we'd like to thank all the other schools who sent breakfast goodies to our school and for the administration that sent lunch and cake. We really appreciate all those wonderful things. Plus, a big thank you from the students, because they each got a cupcake. And as our school is a healthy food school, we never get cupcakes, so they were extremely excited. So thanks.
That was a mistake.
Bet, and take it back.
It's supposed to be an apple.
We had just an amazing few days in Washington. And the whole time was just feel-good. I couldn't stop smiling, I couldn't stop telling everyone that I'm from Moore Street School in Danbury, Connecticut. It was just, I feel goosebumps right now thinking about it. It was just really a lot of fun. One of the highlights for me was hearing a speech by the National Teacher of the Year. And some of the things she said were pretty much a lot of the things that I do in the classroom. Her daily strategies were the things that I do, that I see other teachers at Moore Street School do. Her relationship with her students and how she makes individual goals for each of them is the same thing that many of us do at Moore Street School. Tuesday morning, we had a chance to visit with Senator Murphy. And Mr. S. got to tell him why and how we, Moore Street School, were chosen as a blue ribbon school. That was really exciting. And then on Tuesday was the luncheon, and here we are kind of waiting. You can see all the people. There were 342 schools from 44 states. It was jam-packed. And the whole place was filled with this electricity and this excitement. Everyone was finally getting recognized for all the hard work they had done. And it wasn't one year, it was many years for many of the schools there. It was a party atmosphere. We had lunch, and there was music, everyone was smiling, taking pictures, laughter. It was really a lot of fun. We couldn't wait to be called up. Danbury, Connecticut. It was alphabetical by state, so we realized we didn't have to wait too long. Finally, they come around and they say, okay, Danbury, Connecticut. And we were like, oh, come on, tell us, tell us. And we run down, we wait till they call us up. And it was just, it was just so exciting to finally be acknowledged for all the hard work we really have done for such a long, long time.
It was a very electrifying moment to be with the other educators and the others who were involved, the superintendents, the head of schools, the teachers, everyone that was involved in the ceremony itself. It was great to be in that atmosphere and everyone having that little excitement for being there and all of their achievements and being able to sit and share with other schools just at that moment while you're waiting for your team to be called and hearing the stories of success and what makes our kids grow. It was just really an amazing experience.
We finally get our award that we've been waiting for. And we have it in the back here if you want to see it. And then they give us a flag, which we will have in our school in a little while. So Moore Street School has been working toward these goals every day to close the achievement gap for at least 10 years. It's all of Moore Street staff who put our students first. From the cafeteria staff to the custodians, Moore Street School PTO, Nurse Susan, Secretary Mrs. Patton, tutors, classroom aides, Liz McKee, our social worker, Lauren Gillespie, our psychologist, Estelle Camacho, our family resource director, our ESL and special education teachers, our special area teachers, the classroom teachers, and Mr. S. Each one of us makes our decisions based on the answer to this question. What is best for Moore Street School students and families? And that's one reason why we have closed the achievement gap. But we're not stopping now. We'll continue to challenge ourselves and our students every day. During our time in Washington, we spoke with many, many elementary, middle, and secondary educators from all over the United States. The districts run the gamut of varied economics and sizes. And in our discussions with other schools, not one school had a magic wand that helped them to become a blue ribbon school. Yet there were three simple things that were repeated every time we spoke to educators from other schools. Number one, their schools follow the distributive leadership model. Staffs make decisions together. Number two, staff collaborates with one another. Teams work well together, and because of this, they take suggestions from each other when changes and improvements are needed. Individuals are not afraid to make suggestions, and they know their ideas will be taken under consideration in a positive way. And because of those two things, people like to work in their buildings. So there's no magic wand, there's no fairy dust, it's just hard work, perseverance, and wanting every child to succeed. Thank you.
What you just seen is an example of distributive leadership. I mean, normally a principal would get up here and give this talk. I didn't have to do that. My teachers asked to do this, of course, go ahead and do it. And so they did. And they're able to recount just a little bit about what we did. But the most important thing that was, as Rhoda and Jen just said, the most important thing that was kept resoundingly said was distributive leadership. Where I don't run every little part of the school, we all vote on everything. Everything gets voted on, so the teachers know that. They have a say, and we listen, we all listen. And then I reserve the right to say yea or nay. I have never said nay in all the years that we've been doing this. So we just work really, really well together. And our staff is bar none the best in Danbury. And my teachers have brought us to this point, and I could not be prouder of my teachers. They are just awesome. The parents of the kids as well, you know, they see what we do for their kids. They, you know, we're pushing 90% poverty and 80% minority. Our parents, they want their kids working hard, but they don't want them working three jobs. They want them to work hard to get a really good job so that they can work hard and have a good living. And so the parents love their kids, you know, they know we love them, we all work together. And this is just the result of what happens when everything is in order the way we all believe that it should be. So thank you, everybody. We appreciate it.
So hold on one quick second, guys. I'm not gonna let you run out of there. Is there Santos who'd like to say something?
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate you, all of you, Bill and your staff. I had the pleasure of touring Moore Street probably a month or so ago. And it was visible to me, I went to a couple different schools, but I saw it, you know, really closely at Moore Street, how the kids absolutely loved the teachers. How the kids absolutely loved Bill. We're walking down the hallway, and the kids are, hey, Mr. S., they come and give him a hug. I got some hugs, you know. And just the family feel that you get from them. The educators really care about what they're doing. Students are thriving. And even in situations that are not ideal, I mean, we toured the second floor there, we get to the end of the hallway, and there was a makeshift classroom, just because there aren't enough rooms. And the janitor's closet, supply closet, that was being used for a classroom. And yet, you've been able to achieve this, your staff has been able to achieve this. So congratulations, you know, thank you for what you do. It was really humbling to see that kind of love. And I've heard from parents who have their kids or have had kids at Moore Street, and they really, they really love everything that goes on there. So congratulations to you, this is really a good honor involved.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you very much.
And thank you for visiting.
Absolutely.
You stayed a long time.
Thank you again for everything you guys do, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And we do it for a lot of Danburyers as well.
Awesome. I would have been kidding you, I love it. Thank you again.
Happy Thanksgiving, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you have a review?
Yes. Chair, I have a motion that the Board of Education amend the November 21st, 2017 Agenda to add consideration of the submission of the student support and academic enrichment grant application to the State Department of Education in the amount of $39,583 to support the Danbury Early College Opportunity Program.
Second, Albert Cooper. All favor?
Aye.
Go. Yeah, that's. No, that's, that's.
That's the same thing.
Yeah, that's for action.
The first one was to amend the agenda.
So we're gonna go on to action, right?
Thank you.
Can you read the rest of the consent calendar?
That the Board of Education approves the items on the consent calendars except at 17-131 through 17-133 as recommended.
Second by Mr. Ferguson. All favor?
Aye.
That the Board of Education approved the submission of the student support and academic enrichment grant application to the State Department of Education in the amount of $39,583 to support the Danbury Early College Opportunity Program.
I think that asked him to run an action.
No, it is, that's what she told me.
She's good?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
Second by.
Don't confuse them.
I usually don't buy what the paper was, but they told me. Second by Mr. Johnson. All favor? Post. Student representatives. Presentation, technology update.
All right, guys. Good evening, everybody. I'm Dr. Glass, myself, with presentation, got us kind of a brief update on technology, some of the stuff from my side as far as the, yeah, the my side. The overall pieces. You have Genny Sklar, he's our network director. I'm glad you guys have time. So we're gonna go through it tonight, kind of state the way things are right now around. Kind of a brief profile, an overview, the present state of technology. Bill touched on the instructional applications. It's our funding issues and solutions. And our recent program, which we launched three years ago. Kind of just to have an idea of the number of devices on our network right now. We have 9,800 Danbury-owned devices. Those are Chromebooks, MacBooks, tablets, and Windows devices and servers. Primarily, we're becoming more and more of a Chrome environment, being the cost is very payable to us at about $300 for the laptop. We do have what's called a Bring Your Own Device, or BYOD. Back in, I wanna say 2012, we launched that initiative at high school and middle school. So today, on any given day, we have 3,200 devices connected to that network at high school, about 2,400 at the middle school level. Infrastructure department, which we have a infrastructure manager, which is Genny. We have two specialists, network and server specialists, two desktop support person, and administrative assistant. And we also had, as the Board knows, technology leaders, which are cut, who moved two years ago as part of the budget reductions last year. They were job embedded professions. Wireless, kind of a good thing, but a boring thing when you talk about it. The good news is we have a lot of new access points and new equipment that gets our kids the internet faster. These are some of the projects we launched in 2017 with a lot of upgrades in our wireless infrastructure for speed, also our network infrastructure on the back, on the back end of our switches. Obviously, we also did a upgrade of our Danbury High School phone system and the Beaverbrook phone system. That was a partnership with the city of Danbury. The city hall and the Board of Education are receiving new phone systems on a combined bid. Actually, we're quite well together. And our last lease that we did, large lease, was in 2015. That was our elementary lease, which was primarily teacher-led devices. All this stuff was purchased through grant funding, most of it. These are some of the larger grants we've received recently. Our largest, you can hear it touched about it a lot tonight, is our E-Rate funding. If you look on the bottom of your cell phone bill or your phone bill at home, you see universal service fund, about a dollar or two comes out each. The school's allowed to apply for that funding. We received a grant for just shy of a million dollars for our network replacement. It was a large, large grant. We had to pay 20% of the cost, but $200,000 was spread over two years. A million dollar grant was well worth the investment. We did receive some grants from the state of Connecticut as well, but the bulk of that really has come through E-Rate. Now, what, Dr. Glass, what's that?
Thanks, Joe. The, in addition to what Joe said, what you're getting speaks to all the time. We want to keep in mind that the primary purpose of having technology is to an end. It's really to accelerate student learning and increase staff efficacy. So it'll always have that in the back of our head. The new curriculum materials now come with embedded technology, ebooks and things like that, other kinds of digital devices. We're moving toward a blended model of professional development. We have some folks that are working with us in the audience tonight. The idea that instead of having a whole herd of people come into a room with a speaker, a lot more online kind of personalized learning. Teachers may provide greater differentiation due to the online and digital resources. So if you have 25 kids in a room and you have 10 different proficiency levels on a good day, you can use technology to provide some differentiation to kids that you couldn't do before because those resources just weren't available. And as next bullet says, some of the things are so user-friendly with kids, and some of our kids are, most of our kids are so friendly with technology that they can guide themselves through it. So it becomes one of our efforts to teach the skills of independent independence, which is really the ultimate goal of education. And then more and more of our families are having technology in the home. And we're trying to push things out and share with parents the digital resources that we have available so kids can have access to that 24/7, as well as all through the summer. Joe's turn. We could spend hours, we could spend days actually talking to and with you about the kind of resources that we have available, and that would be equivalent to unusual punishment. So what we did was, we wanted to hit just some of the big ticket items to give you a feel for it. And then the handout that you have is by no means complete, but it goes into much greater detail about the kinds of things that we're doing. So you hear Lexia, and especially for the board members who have been recently touring the elementary level. Lexia is a reader support program for kids who are struggling. Read Natural is another one exploring the code. We talked about the code of phonics, and struggling readers have a hard time decoding the word, breaking it apart and understanding it. F&amp;P or Phonics and Penel is one of our main, say, phonics instruction programs. It's been in operation for 20 years. Teachers College Columbia, you'll hear about the TC Units of Study, or you'll hear the name Lucy Coffins. Dr. Coffins is the director of the TC Readers and Writers Workshop Model, something that's relatively new. We looked at it 10 years ago, which is cost prohibitive. But in recent past, we built in through some grant support, Read 180, which is started at the middle school level, 6th grade for kids who are struggling. System 44 is a version of the same kind of thinking by the same company that's really designed for very challenged kids. Sometimes we have with our spec kids, sometimes with our ELL kids, sometimes with our mainstream kids. The rest of those programs all do the same thing, supporting literacy development. Our basic skills area, reading, writing, we're gonna pick the old three R's, so literacy and memoracy. We have an analog to Read 180 and Math 180, by the same company. You might hear MobiMath, there's MobiMax, MobiMath, iXL Math, Handmarks. Khan Academy is a free online, open source area of digital resources. GeoGebra is something that's a little bit newer than we've been using. We spent trillions of dollars years ago on graphing calculators. It seems like the more we buy, the more the kids lose them or rate them or something. We now have online graphing calculators through a particular program, which gives us a cost efficiency. E-books are nothing more than electronic books. The Board may remember a couple years ago, it was even last year, we talked about when, when I went to school in the 1700s, we had the dark place called the library. We moved forward to a multimedia center because things like phone strip projectors and 16mm films came in, and it was just too long, so they changed it. It's shortened it to Media Center. And we've been moving now pretty aggressively, but pretty quietly, to a Learning Commons model. If you go to the high school, for example, you'll see the signage has been changed from, including, there's RAIL language as well, that says Library Learning Commons, there're big banners that are up there. The three middle schools have done the same thing. You'll see examples of what that actually means. And ebooks are becoming much more prolific in the Learning Commons. Credit Recovery, I gave you a definition over here. It's pretty complex. It's for juniors and seniors who need some extra support to get through high school in a meaningful way. And so it's an online program, and you'll see all the listing of the courses. It's primarily the co-academic areas with a few ancillary areas. I know the request that Billy Gold has also talked about, do we have open source? Open source simply means it's free, and it's online. And we also have feed-based resources such as Read 180 and Math 180. We have to, sometimes buy licenses, sometimes we just have a flat fee, et cetera. We're doing a lot with music, not only with music in the visual and performing arts area, but also with phonics and how you can sing songs and things like this that really helps your development. Online storytelling, television, you may have heard that term in the description, celebration, where it's actually a storytelling piece. We're doing a lot with the visual arts and other disciplines specific, meaning one of the 11 mandated areas, all the 11 mandated areas have different kinds of subscription, digital subscriptions. Tutorials are available for kids, the applied arts, not just the fine arts. So we're really trying to saturate this as much as possible. Years ago, back maybe 10 years ago, we started talking about digital natives versus digital immigrants. And so if you were born before, it was 2001, you were a digital immigrant, as we inhabit. Some of our other, our newer board members were digital natives and born into the age of technology. Quick sidebar, I was in one of the elementary schools a couple of years ago, and it's actually South Street. The kids were doing the educational games they were doing. And I walked over and I said, what are you doing? And two of the three little kids in the group explained it to me. I didn't see it, and my phone password protected. One little rudder ass grabbed it and downloaded the program that they were using. It's here, you can take your phone back and they'll show you how to use it. So this one, 3rd grade, kids are that facile with technology, so this is their world. Moving to the Library Learning Commons, and the name technically is Learning Commons, but we're trying to do this transition piece for a couple of years so kids and more so the staff get used to the idea of a library turning into a Learning Commons. As I said, we're doing it pretty quietly, but once a month, twice a month, I'm up at the high school or the middle schools. Today, I was with all K-12 media specialists talking about this, figuring out how to have a greater saturation of computers. You'll see some examples of 3D printers, Mediascape, Makerspaces, Google Glasses and Circuit Kids. So a picture tells a thousand words, so, Joe, thank you. That's a 3D printer. This was considered kind of almost like a novelty about five years ago when we brought the first one in. But now the medical community is using it for prostheses and other kinds of very high-end technological applications. Architects are using it, they model a small building before they build a big building. Our kids grab it and get it to a game suddenly. Thank you. Mediascape looks basically like a flat-screen TV and a bunch of computers. The difference here is the computers are actually linked together, so four or five kids can sit at that table and all work on the same project simultaneously. And you heard Bill and his team talk about collaboration. It really is where we are now, it's longer than that quiet place in the library. If it's quiet, something's wrong. The kids are together talking about projects, how to solve problems. And as the Board knows very well, the two big goals, the coherence grant, 21st century problem solving, and making an argument based on evidence. You'll see kids looking at citations and research to support their argument. And their argument is based on solving a real-world problem. We did this first at West Side because we had the money when the building was being built as kind of a little omen kind of thing. I teased the other media specialists at the other two middle schools and said, we think you guys could do something like this. Much to the concern of Dr. LeBach and Christine Haddad, the media specialists. They took a $5,000 Mediascape and they recreated it for $1,800 by going out and getting a flat-screen TV and they used Chromecast. And so this is why their newer version, homemade version, do it yourself, is, has more capability because it's not tethered to anything. So all the middle schools now have Mediascapes. Makerspace is not so much very new, but it's new to a lot of folks in terms of the language. The Danbury Innovation Center next to the library downtown. Makerspace is where kids take things apart and they put things back together. And they have problems that they're trying to solve, and it's all around the idea of innovation. And many of us have heard that term, continuous improvement, but this is designed to have this continuous innovation, kind of breaking the old types of things. So here's kids working on creating something that's designed to solve a particular problem. You'll see one group of kids I saw, they were trying to put things together, and they had four or five kids holding it, they came up with an invention that's based on a camera tripod, and they use that to link all the pieces together so that all the kids have free hands and they're able to actually move through it. That's part of what that is. That's part of what that is. Google goggles, you may have heard of Google Glasses. They're expensive and it's virtual reality. But for, I think it's $4 or something like that, cardboard container like that. Inside each one of those is a cellphone. And those little kids are taking a virtual field trip to the Vatican or to the Museum of Modern Art or to SeaWorld. And as they turn their heads and you'll see, if you watch them, it's terrible because they're head to head going in different directions. As you look up, you see the ceiling in the building. As you look down, you see the floor, left, right. So it's like you're really inside whatever the edifice is. Circuit Kids, it's another part of the Makerspace thing. It may sound kind of silly, but you go to the Innovation Center, the first thing they do is they teach kids to soccer. Kids love to take things apart and like put them back together again for different purposes. So we'll give a group of kids a challenge, move a notch across the table. You see, the best example of this I can share with you is the His Royal Robotics Team. And they use this kind of technology. So turning back over to the excited.
Okay, kind of wrapping up as far as, I wanted to touch a little bit on the leasing piece that the board launched into several years ago. We did a few large leases, which really thankfully got us over the hurdle of some of the major issues we had with technology. It was honestly, there was large leases done back in, I believe, like '05, '04. And due to funding, you know, it's hard to believe, some of the leases weren't renewed and weren't funded. So we reembarked on this leasing model. And these are the three big leases that we launched in 13, 14, 14, 15 and 15, 16. The 16, 17 lease thankfully really didn't have to do because of the large e-rank. So that was a big mitigation cost to us, thankfully. Just give it kind of a history. Obviously, the board knows the lease purchasing really, it gave us the ability to, in a sense, buy a massive amount of equipment fast and short amount of time. Interest rates are still fairly stable and well. We're still looking at financing around 2% or so on, on some of our capital leases. The next issue we've got before us really is our next lease we have. It's coming up in the summer of 18. Our middle school lease will be up. And obviously, our last round we did were mostly Mac for function devices for teachers. So we're currently out exploring a pilot with some of our middle school teachers on Chromebook model. It gives us a lot more options on device costs. A Mac is $1,200, next to $300, $400. We built some teacher-based software and curriculum that is still Mac-based. We've got to make sure we don't lose that in the process. So we're at least going to evaluate if it's feasible. We still see the model working well for kids. I still see that as being a viable solution to keep in kids' hands. The Chromebook has allowed us to buy far more devices than ever. So in the coming months or so, you're going to start talking more about that lease and you'll have to evaluate the size of it. If it's really smaller with the Chromebook, you do a lot of our mapping of that lease. So that's kind of our, and obviously projector cost is ongoing. Those are kind of some maintenance items now that I feel like they break every day. And questions to the board?
Joe, I just want to add to the board's thinking the questions. We get calls periodically for donations. We'd rather take cash, but normally it's ours. And we haven't been able to accept it, not that we don't want them. We just can't support the various platforms, it becomes more problematic. So if you hear, "Why aren't they taking donations?", that is why. It's just impossible for us to support it. And people kind of say, "What do you mean you don't need it?" No, we need it, we just can't provide the upkeep or the reprogramming and the support.
Yeah, at times a lot of equipment is older or it might be like the old CRT monitors that are really large. A lot of people haven't got rid of them. A call suddenly like, "I have all these monitors." I'm like, "You don't want to use them anymore." And they're really like bow anchors. And so you feel bad and you turn stuff away when people are giving you things. It's like, you know, it really doesn't fit what we do anymore. And they really are, you know, we had some call, they thought a lot of large TVs, like the big, big, you know, the old style CRTs. You know, it's nice and all, but it's like really just not going to be useful. So I think it's, a lot of teachers doing GoFundMe, so that's talked about a lot. A lot of Chromebooks, a lot of teachers getting two, three, four Chromebooks to their classrooms. So that's been a big plus for us.
Anybody had any questions for Joe or Dr. Glass?
I have a question. Have we explored, I mean, I know we're dealing in an environment of constrained resource and all that. So I know it's.
We're flush, what do you mean?
It's a huge term to put on anything. But I mean, have we, I hear about the districts moving to one-to-one, you know, full one-to-one and all that in their classrooms, you know, doing things with flip instruction and all sorts of wacky things. I mean, have we ever explored, you know, what the cost implications would be in going one-to-one or trying to roll out some sort of program to do that? Maybe not only, I mean, all these districts, they don't do it all at once. But even if, you know, some sort of a rollout, maybe starting in the elementary schools, I don't know. Has that ever come up?
I'll speak for the one-to-one and the question of flip classroom. We're looking at the one-to-one model at the middle schools in this next lease. There could be a possibility to do some or at least more penetration we have now. Maybe not a full one-to-one or something to that effect. You know, we're looking at digital lockers. There is a, basically a locker for digital equipment. You have a code. Kids don't use lockers and stools, but these are charging lockers you can buy now. So in other words, I have a code to my locker, I plug in my cellphone and my laptop. Inside that locker is safe and secure and I leave it there. If I need to go to lunch or wherever, it's all charged. So we're looking at one-to-one. It's expensive, but I mean, there's a lot of game to it. I think this next leasing round, if we do come to fruition on this one, you'll see a lot more penetration than more we have now for technology at the middle schools. Because we'll have less maps in the next refresh. We've been to the middle schools, both Rogers Park and Robben Buck, those large IMAX screens. And those were significant costs. And really, most of the kids are really using straight Chromebooks. So that will bring down and probably provide more devices in, as far as the flip classroom.
Just to make sure that everybody has the same vocabulary. One-to-one, somebody needs each child has his or her own computer or digital device. Megan Martins and I, about six, eight years ago maybe, went to a conference on one-to-one. And there was a fellow from Vermont who was a high school principal. And he was raving about how wonderful it was and that the district had covered the cost of this. And so we met with him afterward and we said, "How did you pull this off?" He had 211 kids, I've remembered it, 211 in his whole high school. And so it's like, "Okay, thank you very much." Flip Classroom, you've probably heard the old saying, "Practice makes perfect." It doesn't. If you're practicing the thing incorrectly, practice makes permanent. So the flip classroom idea is that at home, the kids go onto a particular site and they do some upfront reading about something, they do interactive stuff with the computers. And then when they come in to school the following day, that's related to the practicing, under the two religion of the teacher. So it's instead of saying, "Read the next chapter," you do the questions at the end, which is terrible educational practice. It's go into this environment, become familiar with this material and tomorrow will practice the application of this. A lot of our teachers are doing a lot of flip things, things like tech.com, Khan Academy, other online resources that teachers are using all the time, having kids go there. The challenge for us is, maybe in a more affluent community where 100% of the kids have their challenges at home, not 100% of our kids don't. We really close that gap exponentially, but there are still some kids who don't. However, even with something like, you know, smartphone, you can get to the sites that we need. The image is small, but our kids are used to doing that. So it's becoming much more ubiquitous. I'd say the next five to 10 years, it'll be kind of the way business is done because everybody will have some form of technology.
Very good explore. It's easier to do at the elementary, but the cost of it is quite high. We looked at, and this is a board issue, quite frankly. You know, go out and buy those textbooks, $175, $215. Some places simply said, "We're not doing the textbooks. We're not doing print. What we're going to do is go digital." I think there's pros and cons on both sides, but that's where you stop looking at prioritizing and getting resources to reallocate them. So we've done some of that. We could do much more aggressive. At the middle schools, we've done a lot of it on grants, not so much on the text materials, but that's what we're still looking at at this point.
The nice thing about a digital textbook, people say, "Well, it's expensive as well. Where's the, what's the big deal?" As the new developments occur through research, say for example, science. And you talk about physics. And two days ago, there was some new breakthrough. They just take the digital book and they update it immediately. And so if we keep a book for four or five years, you know, after the first years, it starts to get a little bit frayed around the edges in a sense. A digital book is like, you can't take it, go and mark all over the thing and put cities and then sell it. There are pros and cons with this.
So what do they cost for the digital books? And do they, do you have to replace them after X number of years? Or is it continually updated?
Yeah, there's a, like Pearson has, we have a lot of books digitally for Pearson. There is a subscription for, I want to say it was five or seven years. We bought a large swath of them back then. So there is a renewal. I mean, they're not, there is some savings in the actual book, unlike everything else. The book publishers don't, you know, give it away. I would take a save, say if it's a hundred dollar textbook digitally, it's maybe 70 or 65. It's not, I mean, it's not a case of, you know, the $10 digital book. It's like when you buy your Kindle versus buying a paper book. A 20% difference give or take. So there's savings, but it's not, you know, it's not really enough to.
That's what I was just trying to figure, how much it justifies the purchase of the equipment.
Our problem here is also, we don't really have a textbook account. So in other words, if you budget half a million dollars for textbooks, hey, you know, we take some money and we budget like $120,000 and hope for the best and get it to your end. So it's, it's not exactly a.
A lot of money.
It's not a money offset of the digital cost.
Right.
Thank you.
So we do have classrooms in the district that are using electronic textbooks.
And almost every, sorry, almost every new resource that we get comes with a DVD or some online subscription that comes with it.
There are some entrepreneurs that have put together programs. Program we have at the middle school in Langley Arts that we're piloting and looking at. It's all on a site that was produced, which one? Engage New York. It was put together with, well, the money from Washington, Race to the Top, New York. And then they had one of the criteria, they had to share with the country. So we're accessing it. So there's where we save on it because we don't need the text, they could use it. And that doesn't happen too often. High schools seem to prefer the hard copy and the text material.
A lot of class sets though.
Frank, I asked my question, but just building off that, how many digital books would you say we have? Or is it primarily high school or?
Middle school, high school textbooks. Yeah, secondary primarily. I would be more, please, your guess. But I would say, I'd have to say 50% or better are digital, I would say. I mean, high school still has a lot of class sets, but your bio books, a lot of those are still. But I think a lot of your social related materials, those are the things that they are. We can check, grab a number for it, I'm curious. Yeah, I know, we'll get one. Yeah, there's probably a few. I mean, your Read 180, Math 180 classrooms, and those are, those are sliced digitally. I mean, there's, there's at least what, one third to two thirds of that class are on, they're on a device, working on headsets in a model. So it's, you know.
Thank you, Joe. Anything else for, well, good. Okay, thank you, guys. We have the, I miss employee representative, so if there's anyone here, come on up. Sorry about that. We're going to stay until the end so you guys have a stay. You can just pull the mic a little closer to you.
My name is Shannon Turner, I'm kindergarten teacher at Pembroke. Josh.
Josh, you're a kindergarten teacher, fifth period at Pembroke?
So we just want to start, like, know that we absolutely love Pembroke School. We have a very unique population, we have a very high special education population, and we are super proud of that. Love our kids.
It's a lot of challenges, this has been about 10 years now. We have about 90, so we have 340 kids, 90 of them are special needs students. But the model is one whole lot of ways, presents a lot of challenges. But I know those kids going forward to the middle schools, kids know them, they're accepted. It's just, it's a wonderful community. So we appreciate the board supplying what we need for that.
The resources that we do have are greatly appreciated. And the kids that do come out of Pembroke are very well-rounded, prepared for life because they're thrown into a situation where they're used to it. And we also do want to take the time, you know, we had the, at the last board meeting, that's my kids represented, and we wanted to say thank you for listening and for.
Looking into those issues and the information going forward to that. The teachers in this district are, you know, the daughter of King Street. My first year, I actually paid out of district fees for her to go to Pembroke, which is, that's how we wanted her to do that. And we got to move in and stay there, but I think it meant a lot. And I talked to Glass and Joe about it, and that was very good for us. So we were invested in a lot of ways in this district, and so we thank you guys. Appreciate your support.
Thank you for saying that, I appreciate that.
You know, this is what people don't see, to think too, is the growth on, quote, our mainstream kids. On the flip side of that, which is really incredibly powerful and worth talking about a little bit as you walk around and see, you know, the collaboration connection and the care.
Those kids, you know, in Broadview and Rogers Park, see those special needs kids walking around. And they're just, because they've been with them for six years. And we actually just had our Halloween event and there was a junior, Ryan Brol, was there, he was in my fourth grade class, an elementary student. And he was helping out and to see that was fantastic. So they come back and they volunteer. It was very cool.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Glad I ended that though. Thank you.
Thank you.
First thing Friday.
Buy more computers.
Thanks for the elementary shout-out.
Just for Pembroke.
Yeah, just for Pembroke.
That the Board of Education accept the October 2017 Operating Results Analysis of the General Fund in accordance with 17-134.
Second by Mr. Alberts, any questions or anything on that? All right, so all in favor? Motion, Karen, thank you, Kevin.
That the Board of Education accept the October 2017 Operating Results Analysis of Grants and Projects in accordance with 17-135.
Second by Mr. Ferguson, any discussion or questions on that?
Changing daily.
If Rich Hoy was here, he'd say, "How about the job?"
Every day, there's another thing that shows up with a negative and a red line next to it. That's what we're telling.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, there were your hand raised.
So Santos.
So, Joe, with the recent, we were just talking about it before, supposedly 223,000.
Can we wait until we get to my report on that? I don't want to go in question. If it's about the budget.
I asked my question.
Yeah, that's all talk about.
Wonderful segue. I just want to know how to shake our split.
So second by Mr. Alberts, all in favor?
Aye.
Dr. South, Superintendent Ward.
Now, it's a question.
Man, am I going to miss this.
Friday while we were at the convention, Joe texted us and said, "There was another decision for 235,000, 225." That was last night.
It's a holdback. I've got it.
You're not going to see it. You're not going to see it.
I'm holding it back.
You know, for us, it presents a real issue to our teachers last week. Part of it is the work, but I think part of it is they're losing a lot of support. And cutting back further, I think it would be phenomenal. This, you know, just this, we'd be in a real dilemma that I don't know how we would get out. De- de- what's the word you want? De-abilating.
Yes.
So here's what I think we should do. We got to continue doing the work that we're doing to support the teachers. We're putting a freeze on the budget, so we're reviewing every expenditure. I've asked Joe not to increase those, add to the expenditure by hiring those two buses. We can't do that. I think you're going to get some pushback from parents right now. The transportation folks are working with us, trying to minimize the time, trying new runs and shaking things around. Each bus is roughly 60.
Each bus roughly 60, 70,000 dollars to 140,000, adding to this expenditure that we don't even have in the budget. You know, it's not finding money, it's just expanding our, our deficit. So we're not going to do that. There is a sped bus that we have to do, because of our handicapped and youngsters. So we do have to push down. So freeze and hold. The other thing is, we've been, you know, I, I think it's been, not only controlling costs for us with the medical, but it allows us to have a formative idea of where we are on insurance. And we think, from what the savings that it looks at this point, that between that and not expanding that, the, the bottom line is, we would be able to, to not make any cuts at this point. That's, that's what I can say. And it is, as Joe said, you know, it appears as a red line. At some point, we have to come back and, and take care of that red line. But as far as operating, operationally, to go in there now and say, okay, what's, what can you cut away from? Kids, well, you know, what's left to cut really? Adminstratorally, you've done, we've done a lot of reductions there. I just, as I said, I think it's just too, too devastating for us to do it. My problem is this, is that if, if the decisions keep going, and that I don't know, at some point, we're going to have to sit down and, and figure out the next steps. I think we have to go back and talk to Mayor and say, look, you know what? You gave us the budget, if these understandings, if there are issues. Right now, most of the cuts coming out of DCS are education cuts. We're getting constant students from DCS placements. We have no control, they're being placed into private placements. We have to pay those tuitions. And that's excess cost. We don't get it back, it goes to the city. We're going to have to ask for some of that money back, there's no doubt. But I think right now is we just kind of watch what we're doing and, and try to just monitor everything closely. That's the best thing I can say.
Also, we could finally give a final, please, state somewhat official number on prior to school district grant. That grant was reduced by the state. Remember, it now is 350,000 dollars. And we set the budget, so we flat funding on that model. It didn't count for the 350 or the 225 that Dr. Sal talked about. We do see some savings that help. It's month to month though. And claims, your claims go between from 1.8 million as high as 2.5. So you've got a lot of fluctuation in that account in due month. So what's a good month? One month looks like, okay, you know, in the future. As Dr. Sal said, we're going to squeeze it as much as we can. We can't cut anymore, we should have sailed. We were not, we can't make any changes today and now. I am concerned about future cuts and what we can mitigate. I mean, we're mitigating a lot. Budget was closed, it was tight. I, I, I can't put a, you can't put a roller coaster blast on this one. It's going to be, it's going to be vertical. And we've been, it's still uncertain what the state is doing. The holdback money is, will be cuts by December. I don't, I don't foresee that what that term holdback is right now, those will be official cuts at some point in the current year.
Yeah, and I don't even want to go into what I might do, because no matter what we save, those groups or those individual fields, though, they're being cut. Your money that you have in the district right now, it's all in personnel. There isn't a lot of stuff. Textbooks are in the way. So there isn't a lot, a lot, a lot to do. So that's where we're at right now. We'll just monitor and then, and every, every, every time you spend some money, we'll have to look at it and make a decision at that time. Anything Kim build? Anybody else want to go? Distinct, this is another, fits in, the team state mandate. You know, there was another mandate that was, that was, we had to follow. And it calls for stipending individuals, which is a lot of work, to work with first year teachers. And these teachers cannot be certified by law unless they have a, a mentor. So it's kind of, you know, we did write the state and send something last week. We have, for us, it's 37,500.
37,000, 500 bucks a teacher, which is not very a lot of money. But when you times it by 75 teachers, you're looking at 37,000 on the funded mandate we got.
So we're, we're going to have to figure that out there. So add that to the 235, that's what I'm saying.
Every day.
This one here, this one here is clearly, if you don't do it, we're breaking the law. We're not going to do that. The secondary, our teachers can't be served. So, and they're not going to alter the law. So that, it is what it is. Last week at the meeting, we heard some, Devin speak about some of the challenges in the schools. What we are doing, I sent you copies of focus questions. I've sent them out, asked principals to get a representative group, put it together, send it to us. And then we'll go through, get categories, and then bring it to the TDEC group and then send it to us here. So that we have some feedback, you know, climate and so forth. So I thought I'd share that with you. And before, anything else on that?
None.
It's celebratory, right? It's Thanksgiving, we need to be thankful for some things. You saw Morris Street, we're really thankful for that. I walked around the schools and, and kids are smiling at working. Teachers are really digging in there and we got to do what we can to, to support them. All right, so this is the best I have.
Question on this teacher feedback focus group. This went out to all the principals?
Yeah. I sat down with the unions and gave them the leadership we knew. Sent it out, showed it to them, asked them to modify it. We talked about the strategy. And so then it went out, went out to all of them. I think I did, I think it's next week, we're going to have to look at them back, give them some time. Yeah, I'll go to our TDEC and in here and see what we can do.
Discussion, was it Joe or?
The module classrooms, we talked at the, at the facilities committee last time. We've got a, we've got them forward.
Those are the SFS and they'll come on from the January meeting for the full approval. For vote, we typically put those on for discussion and move into action. The city will enact their, the city has then passed a motion at the city council meeting in January, which will begin a building committee and begin the process.
Any questions on that?
Just real quick, I did ask at the last meeting, we envision it goes according to plan for next full year?
And that, are we going to, how much are we being reimbursed towards that?
We're, I believe we're 60, 63 and a half right now.
Do we think we're going to have funding capabilities to do this? And even that, what's, what's the total? We think we're.
750, 750,000, thereabouts.
You, for the board's sake, you know, we've, we've worked with the city. We're paying for the tennis courts and, you know, with the funds and trading off. I think, you know, we need to go to them, they need to step up and help us out here.
We don't really have much of a chance. I mean, we don't have any reserves left up for the children.
No, sorry, they'll get reimbursed and the bonds seem to, just, they sell these bonds, you know, so that doesn't seem to challenge.
Yeah, the CS are bond rating, they're well loaded bonding pact. So there's, there's definitely.
So we should be hopefully okay, but if not, we'll come back to you.
Should we explore meeting with the, the city?
We will when we have our, you'll have, when you approve it, there'll be a committee with the city and stuff. Because they own the buildings, we don't.
Just an analysis of what, like we've talked about, you know, other buildings or what else can we do?
Yeah, we're having discussions on each side, too, obviously, that's, that's.
Any questions on that?
I put, did I put the information, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Did I put the information about the college visits? Did Joe get that? Oh, I'm sorry. Did they just came over? I was just impressed with the number of colleges visiting the high school. Right now, 48% of our seniors have started their college applications, over 100%. 50% of them are white seniors, 36% are Hispanics, 52% are half American seniors, 62% of Asian seniors, and 50 multicultural. And 100% of our Hawaii and other Pacific Islands is applying. We're hoping to get 100% this year, that year, 90% range. So I'll share this with you. The council has been doing a great job with bringing in and visiting colleges. So they'll need some stats for us. I'll send it to you.
Anybody else on that? Okay, Board Chair, President Floyd. So the Board of Ed annual meeting is December 6th at 5:30 Eastern at West Side Middle School. Bobby, Bobby, be attentive. All right, great, I'll be there too. We were invited, it's free food, so I'll be there. I'm not on the board anymore. Just like you said, thank you to everyone, as everybody knows, my last meeting. And also for Ms. Alberts and Mr. Ferguson. So just wanted, Cabinet, Dr. Sal, Joe, Kim and Kelly and Sal, thank you so much. It's been a great four years, especially as, as last year's chair, to work with you guys. And the fellow board members, I mean, you know, I think this is a great group of people. And I think that the board truly puts kids first, which is, which is great. And that everybody really cares for what you're doing. So thank you the last four years and the last year's chair. And also Deb Warner, I know you're watching. I called you already to tell you, but publicly I like to say, thank you. And great job making those emails I had to send out sound normal. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
5:30 is a photo, right?
So I'll get there by 6:00. Wait a second, when's the food coming out?
Five.
Okay, I'll be there at quarter to five. Yeah, I was going to ask you. No, I spoke for myself, but yeah.
I actually, I thank everybody. And something that I've said that resonated with the board with me is this is probably the best group. It's 16 years from now that people are seeing this group. This is relaxed. I thought I'm not crying, I'm sorry. But this is the best group of people from the new straight down to just regular, you know, that are working in the Department of Education. Thank you all for that very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ferguson has a statement. To echo what everyone has said. It's been a great opportunity and privilege to serve alongside all of you and to be a part of the board for the past four years. I've learned a lot here and I take a lot of that with me. I will say that this is, this experience has helped prepare me very much, especially on the education committee on the Capitol. And I'll always consider myself a part of the Danbury Public School family, not only having gone through it, but now serving on the board for the past four years. And even in the legislature, know that you have a family member up at the Capitol. So thank you very much and it was a pleasure and best wishes to all. I will not be a stranger.
Oh, Mr. Ferguson.
Three of us.
All in favor? All right, great, thank you. Look at that record time, too. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Nellie May, she's all sitting. Let me know if I can help.
Okay, okay, I'm really excited.
They plans or you guys don't?